All right, it's seven o'clock. Thank you all. Wow, you guys are good. Thank you all for joining us. This is a great week with school started and we have a lot of recognitions. But let's go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome again. I appreciate you all being here. And do I have an adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All right. We will move on to our superintendent's report with our acting superintendent, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, President Doan. We've had a strong start to our school year already. Many thanks to our three high school students, Elaine Watson, Gabby Sisbuentes, and Leah Finch, who collaborated on our opening day song, "One Voice." It was important to us to offer a tone and theme of voices united as we start this school year. You can see the video and the performances on our social media accounts. We also welcomed our staff back at convocation this week, last week. This was a time to be together and share our common message. Our teaching staff and support staff have been ready to welcome our 18,000 students this week with open arms and care. This month, we will be furthering our discussion about the comprehensive facilities master plan process. This process, again, will offer a public engagement opportunity in which we've had meaningful conversations about the future of our school district. As we've laid the groundwork for the next steps in the process, we look forward through listening to your thoughts and recommendations regarding our students, staff, and community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we have the fun stuff, presentations and recognitions. And Judy, you're going to start us off, please?
Thank you. The 2019 build season was filled with weather challenges which shortened the number of days that the team had to, in the shop, leaving the robot just shy of being competition-ready. Team Driven 1730 continued to work relentlessly prior to the first regional at Olathe South High School in March, eventually getting the robot ready to compete at the last minute. As the weekend progressed, Team 1730 found themselves sitting in third place and in the finals at Olathe. Eventually, the team earned a wild card bid to the world championship while at the regional competition. Team Driven competed in a second regional at Rockhurst High School in March, again ranked third going into the finals match. At Rockhurst, Team 1730 received the Engineering Inspiration Award, a prestigious award based on the outstanding community outreach program sponsored by the team. With these two regionals under their belt, Team Driven found themselves ranked as the number-one team in Missouri going into the state championships. By the end of the state competition, Team Driven was able to build an alliance that led to a Missouri state championship. So very much congratulations to our head coach Wyatt Durgan, Team 1730 coaching staff, and the numerous volunteers, parents, supporters, and team members. It was truly a joint effort by the team, so congratulations. And if you have family members in the audience, if they would stand as well. Thank you all for being here. Congratulations.
Ready for me? In November, the Winter Guard team began preparation for the season with choreographer Zachary Barber composing Madness, turned out to be a special show for the Golden Guard. The focus to work hard pushed through to the next level at each competition paid great dividends. The teen nineteen Lee Summit girls led by, the high school girls led by eight amazing seniors, completed the 2019 competitive season undefeated. This group of girls left everything on the floor. They spun, danced, and tossed their hearts out. The Golden, the Golden Guard had the opportunity to compete against teams in Missouri, Nebraska, and Arkansas. Their final meet, the state championship, found them pitted against 30 other teams. The Golden Guard was led by head coach Laura Finch and assisted by Abby Bishop. Consultant work was done by Sean Gredine and Jacqueline Valazinzula. I forgot, I probably butchered that pretty good. Congratulations to all the guard members, coaches, consultants, parents, and supporters on an outstanding undefeated state championship season. Way to go Tigers.
All right, so I get the pleasure of doing 3.03, so I'm going to ask Johnny Brackens Jr. to come on up here. As you'll hear, he kind of rolled through his season, so. Tonight, it's my honor to recognize our Lee Summit High School long jump athlete Johnny Brackens Jr., who topped off an undefeated season with a state championship in the spring of 2019. Could we also have his coach Johnny Brackens Sr. come on up here, too? Congratulations to the Missouri State long jump champion Johnny Brackens Jr. and his coach Johnny Brackens Sr. Okay, I didn't look it up, but I have to ask Johnny. Johnny, how far did you jump? At state? So a little farther than I jumped, okay. Just making sure. All right. All right, just making sure.
Aren't you three nineers?
You know.
Right, Mr. Murdock. I have the pleasure of reading 3.04, and so would our Lee Summit West High School Girls' Track and Field members. Please come forward as I read this about you. The Lee Summit West High School Girls' Track and Field Team won their fourth straight state championship in a row, which ties the Missouri big class state record. This marks the sixth state title in our program's history and the 11th time in our 15-year school history our girls have finished in the top four at the state meet and been on the podium to receive a state trophy. The Lee Summit West girls won the meet scoring a total of 86 points and were 23 points ahead of the second-place winners from Pattonville High School in St. Louis. Congratulations, Lady Titans.
Dr. Miller jumped in there like she was running also. I think she may have been on that team. All right, 3.05, the 2019 spring state champions, Lee Summit West High School, four-by-800-meter relay team, if they could come forward. So after this meeting, we'll be racing between the two groups out here in the parking lot. Is that the plan? Lee Summit West High School Girls' four-by-800-meter relay started the meet off winning by over 10 seconds. Audrey Parson, Ginger Mornix, Haley Harden, and Madison Holsey were all on the relay team. Maddie Harris had to juggle both the javelin and the shot put, which, shot put, which is next to impossible. She ended up setting a school record in the javelin and throwing her second-best throw of the season in the shot put, placing second in both events. Lee Summit West High School Girls' four-by-800 meter relay, I'm sorry, that's it, yeah. Outstanding. It's gone here twice. Still got to head and write it twice, right? Well, 3.06, Lee Summit West High School also had individual secure state champions in their personal events. So, Lee Summit West Audrey Parson and Ginger, I'm sorry, Ginger Mornix recorded their second state championships in their individual events. Audrey won the 800 in, wow, 213.19, and Ginger became the first 3200 state champion in school history. Our final state champion was Jessica Haney in the high jump. Jessica goes down in state history as one of the best, one of the best, winning her fourth consecutive high jump, which means she was a state champion in the high jump for all four years of her high school career. Amazing, fantastic.
And now to honor our Lee Summit North, some of their teammates are for the 2019 spring state champions. The Lee Summit North High School four-by-100-meter relay team of Keon Mozy, Duben Okon, they don't have that pronounced, oh yes. Here it is. Daven Okonquo, right, okay, sorry about that. John Eldridge and Niles Thomas were awarded the state championship for their relay last spring. Keon is able to be with us tonight to recognize this accomplishment and also note that the relay team also set a school record at this event. Good job Broncos.
My apologies for not getting your names right.
Congratulations. Those are fun recognitions, and I know it's been three months in your bag at school, but best of luck next spring and robotics is in the winter. All right, awesome. Linda, do we have any public comments tonight?
We have no public comments, and I might mention that board member Clark is with us via telephone.
Thank you. Let's go down to 5.01, board reports, our meetings attended, and we're going to start off with Mr. Allen.
Oh, it's the best part of the meeting.
Mike Allen's talking, I would leave too.
My goodness. Our principal's stay, uh-oh. I know. It is a school night, yes, that's true.
Back to school night.
Go back to school night.
Administration's with us, though. Administration's with us. Well, quickly, Julie, this is going to be quick because Team Lee Summit Orientation was scheduled while I was out of town, so I was unable to make the meeting, however.
You will make it up.
Sharon Griffin was very, very nice to spend some one-on-one time, provided a good overview of Team Lee Summit, and then I'm going to meet with Dan Finn, Director of Team Lee Summit, on Monday, here in SLC for about an hour.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. First, I'll report on Lee Summit Educational Foundation. The foundation's been gearing up for a great new year with community kickoffs for Friends of the Foundation campaign and our seven-annual fund drive and race for the future. You all should be seeing peak grant signs and Race for the Future signs around the district at all of our schools right now, and you will see more race promotions coming very soon. As before, I know I sound like a broken record, but the foundation does encourage 100% participation of both our Board of Education and our Foundation Board members. And your Friends of the Foundation brochure is in front of you. I believe you received one last meeting, so believe me, we're not really trying to cram this down your throats, we just want to make sure that you've got the opportunity if you wish. Also, the Race for the Future brochure is there, too, now, and you can go online and sign up for that like I do and be a dream partner where you don't actually have to race, you just, you can sleep in and just pay your fee and get the shirt and look like you're an athlete, even though you're not, like me. So anyway, thank you for considering that. We look forward to hearing the foundation presentation a little bit later on in this meeting. The second group I'd like to report on is the Chamber of Commerce Government Relations meeting. That meeting was on July the 26th, and it was great to see Dr. Emily Miller and Kelly Waichel at that meeting. I introduced Dr. Miller to our group, and Steve Arbo, our Lee Summit City Manager, presented information related to the August 6th bond issue on the ballot in Lee Summit. That issue included construction of two new fire stations and body cameras for our police department in addition to some other items. If you kept track of that election, that bond issue did pass by a large majority on August the 6th. That's my report, thank you.
Dr. Hedrick?
I, I do not have any reports, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Really don't have any of the reports, do we? Do have an upcoming, very important kickoff to the fall, and that's a Citizens Advisory Committee meeting on August the 26th.
Thank you. Ryan?
Just Finance Committee, which we'll read here in just a second.
Okay, and I start up my boards, the end, I think, actually Monday's my next one, so I will have a report next month.
Mr. Smith, real quick, what time is that CAC meeting?
It is at 6:30, 6:30, 8:30, right here in.
Here at SLC.
Right here in this room.
All right, Jackie, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, thank you. The first thing I want to acknowledge for the community is that I was able to attend the service on Monday, there was a visitation in service, actually, and it was the visitation for recently passed Representative Rebecca Rober, and I hope everybody keeps her family in their thoughts and prayers. And also that day, I had split time, I was in attendance for a special interim committee on the oversight of local taxation, and that committee is meeting around the state, and of course, some of that discussion is around the recent county-based reassessment, so that's something that's going to probably have, that committee will have some recommendations that will be a part of the conversation in the 2020 legislative session. Had the opportunity to visit personally with Dr. Miller and, and her work that she's engaged in right now, including the second phase of CFMP, some community groups around the equity training that we approved. And then finally, we're eagerly awaiting a rescheduling of the secondary program expansion committee's meeting that was recently rescheduled, so that's it.
All right, thank you. On to our finance, and Ryan, I believe you'll be giving us your report.
I do get the privilege of reading the finance report tonight. Could go into debate mode here and see how fast we could read this. So the Finance Committee met yesterday morning at 7:30 a.m. The transfer of funds, there's no transfer of funds that will be needed here for July as the revenue was higher than expenses in the special revenue fund. Our total investments through July are approximately $105.3 million. The expense percentages are within the expected budget parameters, and the current fund balance for July is 28.98%. There's a tax rate hearing date. The district is required to conduct a public hearing each year on the proposed 2019-20 tax rate. The recommended meeting date is Tuesday, September 24th, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. at the Stansberry Leadership Center, which is right before our monthly board meeting. This month, the balance sheet was not prepared as the business office is currently in the process of closing the books for fiscal year 19. In September, a July and August balance sheet will be presented to the Finance Committee. In our facilities component, construction and maintenance update, the Finance Committee reviewed updates on the following projects, the Woodland sewer improvements, middle school track resurfacing, BCMS intercom replacement, Westview roof replacements, and the Lee Summit West retaining wall improvements. We also are planning for future projects. There is a construction manager at risk, item that people will see tonight. The committee, the Finance Committee discussed Board Policy FED, which states the board must publicly disclose at a regular meeting its intent to use the construction management at risk, also known as CMAR method, and the criteria it will use to select a CMAR. Administration is recommending using CMAR due to better cost management and reduced risk through a single construction contract. The Woodland Elementary Sewer Improvements, this project involves construction of a pump station on the school property along with approximately two miles of forced main sewer connecting to a city manhole. Funding for this project is provided through available 2015 bond resources. Couple of other items, pre-ACT, to assist with ACT preparation, all sophomores in LSR7 are offered the pre-ACT. Administration recommends the purchase of 1,495 pre-ACT forms with the understanding that payment is only required for the actual number of tests that are taken and scored. A change of position from paraspecialist to licensed practical nurse at Lee Summit West High School for 2019-2020. Administration is recommending replacing a vacant paraprofessional position with an LPN due to specific student needs. We only have one action tonight, since we didn't need to get into the special revenue fund, that's item 6.03, to approve the treasure, to move to approve the treasures report and payment of the bills.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? All right, thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Items for decision and consent. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda items 7.01 through 7.10.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Ryan?
I do have one question, and this is probably for Kyle, on 7.05, on the mutual sheltering and reunification there with Legacy Park and Great Beginnings. My question is, is while, if there was an emergency at Great Beginnings and we had to move them over to the Legacy Community Center while there's clearly multiple stops that parents could pick those kids up, I'm curious, is there a secondary egress point to get out of that since there's only one road to get into that area? Or am I missing one from an emergency standpoint and emergency vehicles being, going into that particular location? I'd be curious if there's another way to get people out of there. I can't remember if there's another road to get there.
Mr. Gurrell, are you okay answering that?
Sorry.
There is, there is one road leaving the Community Center, Great Beginnings Drive, but then once you get to the end of that drive, there is two ways out of the Legacy Park. Go north or south, over to Blackwell, there's two different drives.
But, but it is just one road to get back into that complex, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
One drive.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Dr. Hedrick?
Yes, my question is actually about 7.05 and 7.06. I'm curious if to those have had a review by our legal. Mrs. Smith, or Dr. Mathes? Okay, thank you, thank you.
There was one thing I want to add on the, one of the agreements, I believe there had been some revisions we proposed, and apparently the city had approved it before the 05. Yeah, and I think we concluded that the changes that we proposed, we can either do next year, it just had to do with the city, I think, pushing it through before our revisions got back to the city. I think we concluded, first of all, that agreement can be terminated at any time, so if there is to be an issue, we can terminate it and fix it if it turns out there's a problem. But the risk of anything in that agreement actually posing an issue is so remote that we decided it was worth just going ahead and getting it approved since the city had already approved it. There were some changes we suggested, they just weren't able to get to the city, the city didn't get them through. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Great. All right, we're moving down to item eight, an item for decision. Dr. Miller, are you going to speak to that, or we just, we just vote on that?
It's a consent item.
Okay. Do we have any questions on that? Oh, I need a motion, sorry.
I move to ratify the contract with Olympic Lawn and Garden in the amount of $7,841.75.
Second.
All right. Now, are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay? All right. Items 9.01 through 9.06, item for decision.
I'll take it. I move that the board approve new contracts over $5,000 as presented in consent agenda items 9.02 through 9.06.
Second.
All right, any questions on any of those? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay? All right, items for decision, number 10.
I moved that the, for 10.01, I moved that the board approve a ward of contract for the Woodland Elementary Sewer Improvements Project to J&amp;N Utilities, Inc. at a total cost of $613,850, as detailed in the attachments in our packet.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Kim Bridgie?
I just wanted to comment that this is something that, an item that we have seen is in the making on our construction report for probably the last year or two years, and it's good to see that we're getting some movement on this because after touring Woodland Elementary year, the school year before last, when we walked through a certain section of that building, you could definitely detect a, an odor, and I felt badly for, for them that they've, they've had to deal with that, and I'm so happy to see that this is now coming to fruition, so, great.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay? All right, on to 10.02.
I moved that the board authorize the utilization of construction management at risk for projects associated with the proposed 2020 bond issue.
Second.
Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Well, actually, it's more of a comment to my colleagues. You know, with the consideration of the agenda, I want to make sure that we express among ourselves that we need to be actively engaged in this discussion, and we are not turning responsibility over solely to, to our leadership team. No criticism of the leadership team. It's just that I believe strongly that we need to have a level of engagement there in that process, for oversight.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay? All right, 10.03.
I moved that the board hire an LPN instead of a paraspecialist at Lee Summit West High School for the 2019-20 school year.
Okay. Any questions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? All right. Personnel report, 10.04.
I move to approve the personnel transactions as presented and contracts issued.
All right, Dr. Delson.
Open for discussion then, yep.
Yep. Dr. Delson, you're just waiting for a question. You're so good. All right, does anyone have, I mean, come up with something? All right, Ms. Fritchy?
Well, I have a comment. I would just like to say a blanket thank you for our HR staff, because, you know, when most of the staff members are off for the summer, and they're on their, quote, vacation. Now, we all know that teachers never vacation truly, and, or our other staff, but while they're doing that, you all are working feverishly in the office to get everyone and all, everyone involved, because it's not just the HR staff, but it's all the administrators and building principals and all of you who are involved in trying to make sure that we have well-qualified staff as our year begins. And if you look at the length of that personnel report, and the number of even last-minute changes that we have had, including hiring some new staff just in this last few weeks, I would just say, we owe you a debt of gratitude, and thank you very much. You're very welcome, and it does take a team. It's everyone. It's the administrators and our departments and site coordinators that get everybody to the finish line for our kids, so we're happy to do it.
Great. Ryan?
Yeah. What, what date will we have the next official enrollment numbers for individual buildings, where we'll be counting how many kids are at individual buildings?
I'll have Dr. Kephart join me.
For elementary, we do a bodies and seats on Wednesday and Friday for the first two weeks, so we will have Wednesday's numbers for you for tomorrow, and then we will follow up with that on subsequent days too, and we'll have secondary numbers for you as well.
And do we anticipate any movement of people across, or the need to add FTEs?
We do not anticipate any movement of teachers at this point in time. There are several classes, class, grade levels that we are continuing to watch. We do still have a banked position, so if we have that for, if we have that need for elementary, we will look at that. At this point in time, we don't have any elementary sections that are over our, the DESI standards and Lee Summit standards.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, ladies. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay? All right. We have some presentations. 11.01, sixth grade into middle school. Here come our middle school principals.
We have the pleasure of having all three of them tonight. I'm actually going to begin by introducing them and thanking them for being here. Just a reminder for each of you, the conversations coming out of the movement of our sixth grade to middle school began through the fall of last year with our comprehensive facility master planning, and moved into a phase two of the exploration, and this is a follow-up from some exploration that occurred several years ago in the district as well. So, Dr. Collier did lead that work in the spring, and we now have three of our amazing middle school leaders that are going to share a little bit more information for you, because they were a part of each of those meetings and have, have been involved in that decision-making as well. The slide that you're, the slide deck that you're getting ready to see, you actually have seen parts of that in the June work session, and also had the conversation about the movement of sixth grade to the middle school. You had that in the July finance meeting and conversation as well. So, this is a follow-up. We would like to again follow up at our September meeting and move towards this being a, an action item. Wanted an opportunity for you to be able to ask some questions, and for our leaders to be able to share some additional information. So, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. David Sharp, to Dr. David Mitchell, and to Dr. Jeff Scal Pharo.
Good evening, Dr. Miller, President Doan, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a great opportunity to get a chance to speak with you again relative to middle school now at this point in time. This opportunity that we worked through, that you looked at, Dr. Collier, we talk about dream, design, and build. What was great about this was, was the opportunity to really take a robust group of community members, students, parents, principals, both elementary, middle, board members, member Fritchy, member Smith, and a lot of other folks to be able to work through with this, to really take a look at what we can do to look at proven methodology, if you will, to relate to best practices of moving the sixth grade to the middle school. And this was achieved through a number of ways, as we look, as we work towards a recommendation of this. We, we did a thorough, what I would call a thorough review of the literature, if you will. When we started back in February, we took a look at probably 30-plus articles of review that were diligent, and not all of them were pro-sixth grade to middle school. So, it allowed for a lot of what I would call reflective dialogue, if you will. You had to really think. You had to dig deep and to really look into there to think, to see what best practices are for early adolescents, and can we achieve that by moving our sixth graders to our middle school. Some of the articles that we took a deeper dive in understanding, the biggest piece was, came away with kind of three takeaways from that, that review of that literature, is we looked at best ways to jigsaw social, emotional, and academic needs of our kids moving to our middle school. Also, as we examined that, we kind of took a look at, at facilities, human capital, and the consequential impact of what that would look like if we were to make that recommendation towards that. And then you see on there, other ancillary-type services, as well as curriculum instruction, there are some consequential impacts that we may touch just a little bit upon tonight, as we kind of take a deeper dive into our presentation to start thinking about it a little bit. Also, you know, community and staff support are key, and they're an integral piece of this presentation as we work through this, because this is a big part of our seven. Later in the presentation, we'll take a look with what Kelly, we did with thought exchange, and we'll be able to kind of start painting a picture of what that looks like relative to staff and community support as we move towards that endeavor. Finally, we need to start taking a look at some recommendations, and the key part of that is, is a smooth transition. And that transition is a key part, because we're moving towards a journey, and each student's success is our collective responsibility, and it's a big part of that. So, as we continue on, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Scal Pharo, and he's going to walk through some guiding questions that the team began to discuss as we worked through.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As the team got together and started working on this, we leaned into the work under five basic questions. They were the benefits to school capacity, how that was, how that was going to be impacted, impact on the current middle school facilities by adding sixth grade to it, what setting best meets sixth graders, both socially, emotionally, behaviorally, the implications on curriculum and instruction by adding the sixth graders to the middle school, and finally, the perspectives and opinions of the staff, parents, and students as we move, if we were to move sixth graders to the middle school. Turn it over to Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening. The next two slides that, that I'm going to touch on just briefly, I believe is information that you have seen at some point, and this really goes back to guiding question number one, which had to do with what would the impact be on capacity of our elementaries as well as our existing middle schools. So, the first slide that you see are the projections, the 1819 K6 and, and current 78 enrollment capacities, as well as extending all the way out to the 2223 school year. And you can see the areas that are highlighted in various colors on the far right side of that. Those that are highlighted in orange and red would be those concern areas based on the significantly higher capacity, the percentage capacity. And then, the middle schools located down at the bottom of that slide, the current design and, and program capacity and percentages all the way out to 2022 and 23 as well. The next slide illustrates what would happen if those sixth-grade students were moved out of the elementary buildings. In addition, a fourth middle school was added to show what the impact would be if those sixth graders were moved into the middle school level. Adding that fourth middle school allowed the projection to maintain very similar capacities to what the existing three middle schools are. In this particular slide, one of the desires of the study team was to look at a learning environment that was approximately 1,000 to 1,200 students, or similar to what the middle schools are right now, which is why that fourth middle school was added to the projections on the previous slide, recognizing that moving the sixth graders into the current three middle schools would have significantly increased that enrollment in each of the, the three buildings. Again, doing so under the desire to create a space for our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students that best met their learning needs, their social and emotional needs, and allowed teachers, administrators to really address those needs through programs and in a space that was appropriate to accommodate those needs. Some of the implications, this is where it really starts to get exciting, when you think about the potential for curriculum revisions, the vertical opportunities of moving sixth grade into the building with seventh and eighth graders, and what that looks like when students align curriculum and staff work together to make that a seamless six, seventh, and eight environment. The increased opportunities for exploratory offerings that those sixth graders could experience in an environment that is a middle school structure. The potential for an increased instructional time related to literacy at the middle school level, and looking at how that could be built into a schedule for our sixth, seventh, and potentially even eighth-grade students. One of the areas that will need further exploration is the feeder system. Obviously, looking at adding a fourth middle school into an existing structure where there are three high schools, raises the question, what would that feeder look like, moving away from direct feeder? So, there would need to be a process to look into that, to see how that would be addressed. Staffing, both current elementary and secondary teachers, looking at certifications, to see exactly where staff members would serve best and be the most appropriate fit. And then, because of the capacity alleviation potential at the elementary level, how would that support some of the future-ready learning spaces of the CFMP work in our K5 buildings, if that were the case? And then, obviously, as a result of all of that, what would the potential associated cost be, as you factor in all of these implications that, that I've shared with you? And I think, I'm going to go into question, or the guiding question five, which really talks about getting the perception of our students, our parents, and our teachers with regards to the notion of the possibly moving sixth grade into the middle school. And Kelly Waichel?
Thank you. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. So, as we worked with the team and did the research, did the overview, reviewed a lot of the documents, one of the things that was very important to us too was the feedback from not only our internal staff, but some of our parent groups. And so, the next couple of slides are going to show you some input we received from teachers and then from parents as part of our thought exchange forums that we provided for them. This is the first slide that covers the top five thoughts and our teacher, well, teacher, let's say, staff-generated, staff-generated forum. I'm going to read you the list of those participants in the staff forum, so you have an idea of who took the exchange and what kind of feedback we were looking for. So, we had elementary administration, middle school administration, fourth through sixth-grade teachers, elementary sped teachers, elementary counselors, middle school counselors, EL teachers, art music PE, elementary teachers, middle school elective teachers, middle school core teachers, and elementary and middle library media specialists. So, we were looking for the gamut of feedback from a variety of internal stakeholders as it relates to the teacher input. We had 333 participants in that, as you can see from this slide, and these are the top five thoughts that those teachers generated. Very much a philosophical agreement as far as instruction as it relates to moving sixth grade to eighth, and the benefits of that potential move. So, you can read these just on your, on your slide and your information, but again, very much supporting from the teacher's side, a move from sixth grade, from elementary to the middle school, instructionally, emotionally, behaviorally, lots of benefits that they saw in the thought exchange. Moving down, you see Group A and Group B. This is where, as I talked to the committee doing this study, we talked about that philosophical split, right? Where is that philosophical, philosophical split between what's best for sixth graders? So, you can see Group A, very much a majority of the teacher stakeholders supported moving middle school, supported moving sixth grade to the middle school structure. And you can see those Group A thoughts there. And then, Group B, the smaller percentage, had very much a philosophical stance of, they're only babies once. Are they emotionally ready? What is the maturity level? Do we want to mix elementary sixth graders with middle school students? So, you can read those comments and really see where that group was divided and how they thought about the issue. Just as a reminder, the question that we did ask to generate these thoughts sounds like this. Considering the many needs of sixth-grade students, which school environment is best suited to foster their development, middle school or elementary? So, the guiding question was, how do we foster sixth-grade students' emotional behavior, academic development, middle school or high school? These are the thoughts that were generated. So, let's move on then. Any questions about the teacher input from those two slides? We're going to move on to the parent input.
Was there?
Yes.
Ms. Rachel?
Yep.
Any one-to-one, anyone, one-to-one dialogue or team dialogue personally, as opposed to just through the thought exchange, you know?
Yeah, and maybe Ms. Fritchy and Mr. Smith and these gentlemen can answer that too, but very much in all of those meetings, participants on the team were curated from the teaching staff. So, I don't know if you guys want to answer that question about some of the thoughts in those personal dialogue meetings.
Overwhelmingly positive, I presume. I mean, as this is...
I, I don't, yeah, from the team, are you asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we started out, I don't think everybody started out in the same place that we ended. You know, it was kind of like a, we start out, and as we moved through the whole process, we came to consensus.
Yeah.
So, there was different.
I wanted to point out too, that we did have a few parents on that middle school study team, and they were very much in favor of the moving the sixth graders to middle school by the end of our, like Jeff said. Yes, yes.
Yeah, and the important point of that, and the means I got to attend with this crew, again, those parents who were on the team of those folks gathering and providing feedback, very much had, I would say, a journey to get to where they landed in their thought process. But again, working with our internal folks, seeing the research, having the dialogue, very much supported the position that the team landed on. Yep.
And just to echo, a very, very positive parent, teacher, at different, all different grade levels, and kind of go back many years ago, when we had this same kind of discussion, or look at six, seven, eight. Much, I hate to use the word positive, but a whole different kind of conversation this time than what I can remember several years ago, when, when we did explore this opportunity, when we were looking at, when we added a third at that time, middle school, and we changed to, well, it was junior high, and we changed to middle school. I thought it was very positive. I thought the teachers, and maybe you're going to get into this, I don't want to take away, was, one of the things that a lot of people don't really think about is certification, and our, our... And our human resources staff did an excellent job of going out there and exploring, because if you're not in education, there's different certifications that different teachers or different realms have to have, and that sparked some very good and very positive discussions, I thought, during that time.
Thank you for that, Mr. Smith. I appreciate that commentary. It's really important to the context of the conversation.
One more question, Kelly.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Everybody's talking educators, but as I understand it, most counselors weighed into this as well, correct? Because I think that counselor relationship is very important, both on an elementary level, middle school level. I think from everything I've read or heard, those were very positive comments about moving sixth graders forward.
Yep. So not only do we have counsel on the team setting it, but also had counselors provide input through the thought exchange as well. So we would echo that. Yep, correct. Okay, good, good question. And I think something that we want to also reiterate as part of this process, as we started with this team, it was very much instructionally driven. What is best academically and programmatically for our kids in the sixth grade level? And not to shy away from the capacity benefits that we would probably also receive, that we would receive from that move, but very much instructionally, programmatically driven. And that was really important to the team to focus on that as they still made recommendations that related to capacity in some ways. So wanted to make sure that we really honed in on that as well. Next, we're going to move to the parent input. So this is a group A of parents. We had about 110 parents. We used focus groups. We used PTA executive boards from each elementary and middle school to participate in this thought exchange with the same question. The question being, again, I'll repeat it for your benefit, considering the many needs of sixth grade students, which school environment is best suited to foster their development, middle school or elementary? And so as we got into the parent feedback, we had 74 participants from that group of 118 that we offered the opportunity to. As you can see in group A, this is really a sentiment of, they think the elementary school is more suited to the best environment for sixth graders. They're used to that. It provides them with a long time from kindergarten, sixth grade, to be in a space for that long of a period of time. They talk about the maturity, physical and mental maturity, maybe not mature enough to be around eighth graders. But really, in this parent group A, you see a lot of the parents who are just concerned about their babies going on to the middle school level and what those fears might be associated with having sixth graders at the middle school level. This is group A, and again, you're going to see the philosophical split to the group B folks, who certainly think middle school is appropriate for sixth graders, like having the longer timeframe in middle school for the programs, for the activities, for the extracurriculars, really like the idea of opportunity. Also, some people noticed that the overcrowding issue could be impacted if we have those sixth graders moved to the middle school level. So, yeah, and then, and a lot of the parents too were just saying, what does the research say? The top thought in the parent forum was, you help us determine what the research says and what you review and what you think is best research-wise and practice-wise, and just help us be educated on that, and we'd be happy to hear those recommendations. So what I just want to wrap up with that is, I think that the advantageous part of this group, it really did dig into the research and have that dialogue about what will be best for our kids. One of the things that we'll have to consider with that group A and group B of parents is, how do we continue to educate those parents when we make the decision? How do we educate them and show them the benefits of a six through eight middle school? We work on a video where our principals, middle school teachers, middle school students talk about a day in the life of middle school, the familial feel, the teams, the small nature of having sixth graders together, seventh graders together, eighth graders together, just making sure that we have some education provided for our parents to help really talk about the benefits of that potential move. Any questions about thought exchange? Okay.
Thank you, Kelly. And as David mentioned earlier, as we move towards conclusion of our presentation here, the exciting part of it is, is there's still some work to do, and there's still some dialogue to have, and there's a deeper dive to be taken. You see four points here relative to elective wheel. Currently now, sixth graders don't really get the opportunity to experience that as our seventh graders do. And so there's some key components of that that we can look to build based on some things with future-ready learning and a lot of other things that we can do there. Social emotional is a piece, you know, a board priority is student well-being and well-being. So that's a big key piece of that. So we can ill afford to continue through this process if we don't focus on that as a key component of our identification there. One part of the process that we didn't touch upon earlier, we did take a look at other middle schools that do utilize this and have the sixth grades in their middle schools. We looked at really their program of studies, if you will, to kind of study what their academic day looks like, to take a look at that. Some more of the work that we need to do is possibly, probably, visit those schools to see what that looks like throughout the day. And then the staffing considerations that David mentioned as well with the certifications is to see how you would line that building up certification-wise, to get yourself set and ready for that. So that is the future work that we have, and we thank you. Sorry, I didn't want to move to that.
Kim Fritsch, you have a question?
Actually, just a couple of comments to kind of add to what these guys have said, having served on that team. And I do want to compliment Dr. Collier, because even though she's not here, she did an excellent job of leading us through that process. It was a very well-constructed team, and every meeting that we had was very well-thought-out and prepared for in the process. And I really truly appreciated the fact that all of those articles, even though we had homework and we had to go home and read lots of articles, we also had the opportunity to come back and sit in our small groups and discuss those articles with one another and come to the conclusions that we came to by the end of this process. There were so many pieces that fed into this, and we, she just chunked it out in just different aspects for each meeting, and we tackled it, you know, each meeting. And I really appreciated that approach and the preparedness of that. And you're talking to somebody, or I'm talking from the perspective of a former middle school administrator who spent 18 years in seventh and eighth grade. So I'm used to the seventh and eighth grade configuration, and if you would have talked to me, you know, 10 years ago, I would have said, no way, no house, sixth graders don't belong with seventh and eighth graders. But I think that there are many factors that have convinced me, in addition to the fact that our times have changed, technology has changed us quite a bit, and I've learned a lot through this process that has shown me that there are ways, and for those parents who are afraid of their sixth graders interacting with seventh and eighth graders, that sometimes the configuration of the schedule can help that solve some of those issues, and so you don't have to be as worried as you are. And the fact that, you know, looking at the kid's social emotional development is very, very important. And kids who are sixth graders today, I don't think they're as naive and little kid as they used to be a while back. So I think we're moving in the right direction. I know we are, after serving on this team with these guys and all of the great teachers, counselors, and parents who are on that team.
Great. Thank you for those comments. Judy.
Yeah, I just have two things. One would be, I think I'm understanding when you say elective wheel revision, would, in layman's terms, would you say, this is what I interpret it to mean, is that there would be some courses that would not be available to sixth graders that are available to seventh and eighth graders and vice versa? Is, am I interpreting that correctly?
We'd be adding. There's courses now that our sixth graders, that they don't have access to like our seventh graders do. So we could expand that wheel.
Okay, okay.
Computers and business.
Yeah, okay. I wasn't sure if that's what you meant, or, okay, or if there was some other courses they wouldn't have access to. So, okay, I, thank you for that clarification. And I do think it would be, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Judy. And we would also look at the elective wheel all the way, what we, our current elective wheel that we have. It hasn't been looked at in a while, in a while. And we, that was part of it too, that we would be looking to change some different, you know, the elective wheel as it is right now.
Well, would there be any of those electives where the certification would be an issue the way, because of the way Desi issues certification for a grade level? Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
This man, that's a consequential impact you have to take a look at.
I just wondered, wondered that because my certification is seven through 12 in business, so I just would assume that, you know, that might be an issue. I wasn't sure. So, and that may be getting too far in the weeds at this point, but I do think that that will be, going back to that education piece, I do think that's a very significant piece of this in terms of support for our parents and our kids, to know that they have access to, you know, additional courses that they wouldn't have as elementary. I think that's really a very key point to support that movement. So that's, that's my only comment there. And the other thing is, I would like to get, see some data, unless you already have it, and I've just missed it, in terms of other school districts in this region and what their grade configuration is, if we could get that at some point. And that's, that's not a hurry, but I do think that would be also helpful information to have.
We can provide that to you at a later time in our Friday update.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. No hurry, I just, that would be helpful. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Allen.
If I move up or back up into the slides a bit, and I don't want to go into the weeds too far here, but I presume the K through six capacity projection is as it stands today, boundaries as they are today, no changes between 2019, 2022? Is that the idea? Where we see the different elementary schools, where we are in capacity today, where we would be if no changes are made, correct?
No additional changes.
Right. Right, right, right. Current lines, current boundaries, all that. So we add a middle school, and the next slide is K through five capacity and projection. So again, similar boundaries, I presume, similar feeder schools somehow MS number four has whatever schools aligned to go there. Then we see 19, and then the projected change is 22, 23. Right? No other elementary schools or other listed, but nobody coming online there in 22, 23. That relieves a lot of stress on those buildings that are currently in place on the elementary level. Mason will just have to go up one level, maybe, I'm not sure.
Right. So that does, we would not be looking at adding additional elementary schools.
Elementary, right.
But you are correct, we have had discussion about the need to make Mason a four-section school.
Yep. Okay. And just for the sake of discussion, middle schools today run in the cost of what? Approximate number, 50 million, 200 million? What's the cost of a middle school today out there on average?
So we have discussed between 45 and 50 million.
Okay.
All park.
At that capacity, 1,200 students, and I presume some modifications to Bernard Campbell, Pleasant Lee, and some at Lakes?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Into the tune of whatever dollar amount? Do we have any idea?
We have very, very rough, rough numbers, so.
All right.
All right, Mr. Smith.
Just a couple of things real quick. When we, when the committee first started looking at this, or when they, as they went through the process, we were talking about the present second graders. Now we have to look at what these, these numbers, unless things have changed, is, when we're looking, it's the third graders that would be affected by this, by this change. Am I correct? We were second, now because of, as we get a year later. The other thing, just very quickly, the thing that was really exciting with this committee that was heartwarming and about kids was that, yes, population and what we're doing with, where we are with, you know, would help with some of the population in our elementary schools, that, that does play somewhat, but the overall discussions throughout the times we had those meetings were, was that it provides opportunities for, for kids. We're not doing this solely because it would alleviate overcrowding somewhere else. And there are other school districts around, I've worked, and you are all aware, you know, you can, you see configurations of five through eight, you see sixth grade centers, you, but, but that never really was a discussion as far within that committee. It was all about how we can provide more opportunities, whether it be through a wheel or extension of that wheel for, for sixth graders, or, and we, of course, all that got tied in, we were dealing with the boundaries, was learning space, what, what, you know, we don't line those kids up in, in six rows across and six deep to, in today's education, like most all of us in here. Even though some of you think I went to a one-room classroom, that was not the case. The, that was what was so exciting, was the, the discussion about what we could provide more for, for kids, from both parents and teachers who run that committee. Thank you.
Thank you for those thoughts. Ryan.
I have two, two questions here. Number one is, what kind of discussions were had within the, within the committee regarding truly just the equity issue that we've been talking about, obviously, over the course of the last year, and probably even more specifically, talking about clubs and activities and stuff that sixth graders are experiencing within the elementary schools as they transition into this particular environment? How do we make those kinds of transitions?
That was a big part of the discussion and looks, and looking into expanding those opportunities for sixth graders, as well as current seventh and eighth grade students. We felt strongly that club offerings and other ways to get students engaged and invested in school were incredibly important to connect with their peers, to build the relationships with those staff members that would be working with them. So that was absolutely something that was going to be critical to that.
And then, it's kind of the other two questions then that I have, so sorry, I actually had three instead of two. I can't count. So, right now, many of the elementary schools do the mentoring program with fourth graders, with kindergartners, fifth graders, with first graders, you know, that kind of thing. What discussions were had with those elementary staff members and stuff of how we could reconfigure that, or have we even gotten that far?
There was a little, in some groups, there was a little bit of discussion, like, lots of elementaries, the sixth graders go down and they're reading buddies to the kindergartners. And it was just like, well, now the fifth graders would be reading buddies to the kindergartners. And I don't think every elementary has, you know, like the, the same type of like mentoring systems, and it's not consistent throughout the district, but pretty much standard is the sixth graders reading, you know, being reading buddies to the kindergartners.
Total side note, I hope we could get some consistency in that, but.
We have a program at PL that's been longstanding for a while called We Belong, which is a web pair of kids. They're eighth grade students that mentor the seventh. This is a group of those, so that can kind of somewhat provide some leverage as we look.
So we have a kind of a template already kind of going.
Even the clubs that we're trying to do at Campbell, to try to restart leveraging that to make those, that most important as we move through.
Awesome, awesome.
The image, some of the, if you will.
There you go. I like, I like that term. That's a good term.
The club program was kind of a staple of our old homeroom advisory, and that went away. I'm not sure when it went away. I was, I wasn't in the district when it went away. But we're, we're bringing, at Campbell, we're kind of like piloting, bringing it back one day a week on Fridays. So it was the same process. So we're going to see how that works out, but just adding that, you know, extra, you know, opportunity for kids, and for the teachers also to be involved in something that they're passionate about, to connect with the kids, so.
Okay, thanks. And then my last question is, is in the capacity projections, I'm curious what discussions or if we've had any to do with the buildings, especially on the elementary side, that will have some serious undercapacity of what we could do with some of those particular areas to leverage those spaces for other activities, kids, opportunities, all that kind of stuff, because we're going to have a few that will have a lot of space, it looks like.
I think there's some opportunities here. I think there's opportunities, and we've talked about decentralizing ELO. There's probably some opportunity, maybe even to look at special ed programs. So that would be nice if we didn't have to centralize programs. So I also think that, one, future-ready, we know that's going to take additional capacity. And you can also see that there are some schools that are still above that 85% threshold, so boundary work is still going to need to continue. So I think having a little extra room over time is not necessarily going to be a bad thing.
Perfect. Good work. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for these fine gentlemen?
Point of order that may have.
Julie, I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you. Just curious, and I don't know who wants to field this, but there's been a lot of conversation around transportation as school has begun. What sort of a lot of conversation around transportation as school has begun. What sort of conversation have we had about transportation and making these changes and, and the kinds of things that we'll have to do?
Board member Clark, I think that's probably an area that we'll have to continue to work through as we move forward into the process.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. I appreciate that committee, too. That great committee, Kim says. Well, Ms. Frankie, are you ready? We have a presentation for the Lee Summitt Education Foundation, the queen of the education foundation.
Thank you very much. I always love this time of year when we can tell you about the foundation, update you a little bit on last year, what we were able to provide, and then look forward to this year, and what we'll be able to help do with kids. Just a little background for those who may not have all of the history of the foundation, but the foundation was started over 26 years ago. It'll be 27 years in February. And it was started as a collaborative effort with the school district through strategic planning efforts and our wonderful community that recognized that need and brought it together. And now for almost 27 years, we've been working together collaboratively to just make some fantastic things happen for kids. I think this is always good to just remember how vast our district is. When we're making a difference in the lives of over 18,000 students, we cover a lot of territory. The foundation wants to be, continually be, a partner in that effort to make just wonderful things happen. I have always joked with our foundation board that I'm much more of a people person, and I, as much as I work with numbers, that's not really my passion. But a couple of years ago, the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation, who we invest funds with, had been doing our financial work and ceased doing that, so we brought that in-house. That has given us the opportunity to delve into and be able to produce some pretty amazing reports that show us more strategically where our income is derived from, therefore where we should spend maybe the majority of our time. And on the next slide, I'll show you a little bit about exactly how we're giving funds back through different programs in the schools. But this is kind of interesting, just for you to see some of the different areas where we generate some income. Our Friends of the Foundation program, our community outreach through that is definitely our largest source. We have about 100 funds that we manage right now. Many of those are scholarship funds for students continuing their education. So we work a lot with donors on those. And then you can see some of our events, Tastefully Summit and Major Savor and Race for the Future. Again, some of our maybe more noticeable areas that people see for income sources. We also have, we put some money into our endowment every year. What you see right here is pledge amounts that have been pledged over multiple years coming in for our endowment. So if we ever had a year when we didn't have a special event, we would still be able to help students through that endowment. I'll show you the next one that tells a little bit about where we gave back last year. So we gave nearly 476,000 back to a variety of programs throughout the district. The foundation has been a strong supporter of technology in our district for many years. The Chromebook Initiative, you see here, before that, if you've been in our K through two classrooms and you see the audio enhancement systems, we helped provide all of those. Then our PEAK grants, we, we love our PEAK Grant Program. And PEAK is our acronym for Promoting Excellence in Knowledge. Those are our grants that teachers write. So when they see a need in their classroom, there's not district funding available for that, they can write a PEAK grant. We have a wide variety of community people who serve on that team and then go out and kind of publisher clearinghouse fashion to make those awards in the classroom. And then, again, you can see some of the other programs in the district that we give to. We work very closely with robotics. We love working with Summit Tech and with Great Beginnings. Helping Hands is a fund that I'll, I'll point out just a little bit, because you may not have heard as much about that. We have had that fund for a few years. We've really been trying to build that fund up more in the last couple of years as we've seen more needs for students, some more, more family emergency needs that maybe cannot be met through some of our other wonderful community resources that are available. And if that's the case, a family can work through the principals and the therapist in their building, the educational therapist, to bring that need to the foundation so that we can try to assist with that emergency-type need. You'll also notice that Race for the Future, Tastably Summit, Major Savor are on there. Those are gifts that we're making back to partner schools that partner with us to put on those special events. And then, of course, we've talked about this, another way that we earn our income each year through some of our events. This is, yes, definitely a fundraiser, but it's also a friend-razor. It's very important to be always outreaching to our community, engaging them, involving them, and we can do this through the race. So I met with the Optimist Club this morning, and I kind of joked with them about, you know, let's see a show of hands for everyone who is a runner, which I could do again, so, and who is a walker. And I haven't seen every hand go up yet, so who knows they need to be? So you, and Kim alluded to this earlier, but even if you can't participate or volunteer for this event, we do have a dream partner category. So we hope that you will put October 12th on your calendar and come join us at Race for the Future 5K. Tastably Summit is another great event that we have each year in March, a wonderful community celebration, a gala, and we hope you will put March 7th on your calendar for that event this year. Major Savor is an outreach that you see primarily through our elementaries. Last year, we were able to give back 94,000 through, to our participating schools and to our annual campaign. And then we have some events that we host through some of our businesses called Connect for Kids. We had one of those a couple of weekends ago at Local Foundry downtown. This is the type of program where a business will say, from this time to this time, we would love to donate back 10, 15% of our proceeds. And we enjoy those events in the community, too. And as Kim mentioned, and we've talked with you about before, the Friends of the Foundation campaign is going on right now. Many of you have already given. Thank you so very much. We appreciate that. This is a tiered sponsorship program and very, very meaningful, not just from, again, the fundraising side, but those relationships that we're building through that, trying to get community people into our classrooms to see grants in action and to see how wonderful our schools are is very, very beneficial and meaningful. And then next Wednesday, we'll kick off our annual fund drive for R7. We've already shared this information with our administrators and with our new teachers. And it's always fun to kind of give a little friendly competition between the buildings. We have foundation ambassadors throughout the district in our buildings who help promote that, and we appreciate their support so much. And we will have some winning schools that we provide breakfast to. So if any of you want to go help serve breakfast, we'll welcome you to come with us when that time comes. And this is a video that we're sharing with our staff. I will end with just a little surprise that I got this morning when I was at the Optimist Club, but John Ellis was there, and John has been a strong supporter of the school district and the foundation for many years. So I was wrapping up my presentation, and he is out in the audience, and he kind of just points at this book. And I just started almost giggling because this was the foundation's first fundraiser back in 1996. And it was a compilation of quotes that we gathered from students and staff at that time, and they had to answer the question, "Lessons Life Has Taught Me." And so just for a little chuckle, I thought you might enjoy hearing a few of those. We've got a couple of books up there for you to thumb through. Matt, a nine-year-old at the time, so think about how old he would be now, 96. Well, for context, I think my son was in kindergarten or first grade at this time, and he'll be 31 this month, so if that tells you anything. But Matt says, "Never stick your finger in an electrical outlet." I'm not sure how he learned that lesson, but it's a lesson that life has taught him. Here's Caitlin, who was eight at Mason, "Don't turn on the hose when someone's looking through it." So, yeah, it might be good to remember. Here was one from someone you might know, Kim Fritchy, who happened to be at Pleasantly Junior High at that time. We'll see if you still agree with this, Kim. "A lesson she learned, every student has a story to tell, especially when they're sent to the principal's office." And Melissa from Campbell said, "Listening is the best way of learning." So she was very insightful at the young age of 13. And one of my favorites on the very front cover from Taylor, age six, in Greenwood, "A smile comes in every language." So enjoy that if you would like just to glance through there. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Cheryl Frankie? I, I actually do. On one of the slides, it said, "I be testing assistance." How, how does that work? How do the, how do the students know about that assistance? When do they know?
Students don't know about it. The staff knows about it. The principals know about it. So if there is a need, a financial need, where a student could not pay for that, then they'll get hold of us and we help with that each year.
All right. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. Yes?
I'm trying to watch online and, and time my question at the right time. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Cheryl might be able to answer this. I'm kind of curious what, what the foundation has been working on or will be planning to work on, particularly in the area of PEAK grants and scholarships for the students, around the equity plan and kind of viewing those programs and, and their decision-making through an equity lens.
Well, thank you for asking that, Jackie. We actually feel like we've been doing that for many years. That is a very important focus to make sure that we are able to provide opportunities for all students who have need. In fact, that's one of the reasons we've been ramping up the Helping Hands Fund the last two years and are putting a big emphasis on that this year so we can do that very thing. So thank you very much for reminding us of that important work.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate that presentation. We had two written reports, one with facilities and maintenance, and the other one was the Human Resources Annual Program. Does anyone have any questions on those written reports? Kim Fritchy?
Hi, I just had one. I don't think that it really drilled down into this, and so maybe I'm asking a little bit more than you bargained for on this, but I think, I know you can answer it. When we're talking about, in the report, you said that you send recruiters out to many different colleges and universities throughout the states, and some predominantly black universities. And I would like to know what the results of our attempts have been to help recruit more minority candidates. Thank you, Dr. Delson.
So specifically with the HBCUs or universities in general or recruitment in general?
I think they do.
Yeah, so recruitment in general, you know, is, is kind of year-round. We're working with universities. We're also in our community. Specifically at universities, we'll send administrators, myself, Dr. Delsem, Dr. Gumsy also goes as representative for the district to recruit at universities. When recruiting diversity, we were able, as you saw in the report, to hire 12 candidates that added diversity to our school district this year.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions about either one of those reports?
Julie?
Yes, Jackie?
I noted in the, the report that for 19, 2020, 12 of 88 teaching hires are moving us toward our goal. Can we get a breakdown? I noted that what the demographic trends were of our student population versus our teaching population by the categories of blacks. teaching population by the categories of black, multiracial, and Hispanic of those 12.
I don't have those numbers on me. We can definitely give you that breakdown. I don't want to speculate or guess or approximate, but we do have those numbers, and we can definitely provide that in a written table.
All right. Thank you. And the, it looked like the HBCU that we recruited from was University of Arkansas Pine Bluff, is that right?
Correct.
So that was the one?
Correct. We did reach out to other HBCUs, but as we're seeing throughout universities, much fewer enrollment to, as a major in education. So, for example, the last two years, we reached out to Lincoln and different HBCUs, and they did not have education majors graduating this year.
Okay. And I have one more question, and again, you may not have this data, but because we've been involved in presentations where particularly MSBA has shared research with us that test scores and graduation rates improve for black students if they have a teacher between the third and fifth grade. Were we, where are we in terms of hiring? Did we have any of those 12 individuals? Do they fall into that category that would support that research?
Again, I can, we'll get a table and break that down. I can think of two in my mind that I believe are in that, just from this year. But again, let me get a table that has specifics, I don't want to guess.
Oh, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And we'll provide that again in the Friday update.
I might also add that although we may not be directly going to those colleges, we do have our online and print advertising to those HBCUs.
All right. Thank you to both of you.
You're welcome.
All right. I, we're about ready to wrap this up. I need a motion to go back into closed session, please.
I move to conduct a closed session, including any record or vote, immediately following the board meeting on Thursday, August 15, 2019, at 301 Northeast Tudor Road Lee Summit, Missouri 64086, for consideration of the following matters: Personnel Issue, Section 610021, Subsection 3 and 13 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri.
Second.
All right. Any questions? All those in favor?
Board Member Smith?
Aye.
Board Member Clark?
Aye.
Board Member Fritchy?
Aye.
Board Member Murdock?
Aye.
Board Member Allen?
Aye.
Board Member Hedrick?
Aye.
President Doan?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, but thank you all for coming out.